Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, May 15, 2018. We're going to remind everyone, if you have your cellphones on, to silence them. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Mosby. Mayor Protem Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. We're going into closed session. We'll have oral communication on the closed session items. Anyone here that wants to speak to us?
Good evening, Mayor Lingle. Honorable councilmembers, my name's Tom Davidson. I'm a local real estate guy. Tonight, you're going to have an opportunity to vote on a project where company SureFresh has been in operation since 1992. Local family wants to build a processing plant here that they can own, control their costs. The second generation is operating that business now. They want this to continue for as long as possible. And on the other hand, they have competitors. So they're not the only food processor around, and they know what their costs are, that they need to compete in this world. So in that regard, they've made you what I think is a really generous offer. They're willing to pay for an easement. They're willing to pay fees many, many years into the future. And also pay market rates for 50, or I mean, 80 to 100 employees. So one of the things I've heard is that there's been a concern about odor control. I took the opportunity to talk to Meridian, who did the original environmental report. They'll do the update if this project goes forward. This is not the only food processor in California, and they've done others. And based on what they've seen, not only with this, but with the reservoir that they're proposing, where they might temporarily store water occasionally, that's not the only reservoir in this state either. And there's ways to control odor, and based on what they've seen thus far, and of course, they'll do it in much more detail, they feel that the results are going to be no significant impact. So during the years that I've marketed this property, I fielded calls from people typically, "I want 5,000 feet, 10,000 feet." Well, the development cost to build 38 acres just makes no sense for that kind of building. And I get them all the time. Somebody calls me today and says, "I want 10,000 feet in Lompoc." It doesn't exist. I don't know where to take them. I don't even know a lot I could take them. But if this project goes forward, the owners will have land that they can develop and can perhaps service some of those people. I also looked at, well, what if I could find a 100,000-foot winery, or maybe four or five people to put that kind of thing? Zodovich has 75,000 feet east of town, five winemakers, five tasting rooms. They pay 20,000, 25,000 a year sewer and water fees. And I think you'll see that's a fraction of what you're being offered. So alternatively, maybe I could fill it with 100,000 feet of cannabis operation. I probably could do that. I'm not sure the owners would want to do that, but think about how much water they would use. Over the years, and the number of times I've been in this hall, I've heard the words "economic development," "economic development." Well, tonight, I think you guys have the opportunity to show the citizens of this city and the industry in general, if you're really serious about economic development. Because, and I'm in this business, I strongly believe that if this project doesn't go forth, there's a high likelihood that this land will sit there for another 30 years. It costs the owners $3,500 a year to carry that. I can guarantee you Campbell's paying them more to farm that. So I really hope you guys think about this. So I'll close with the famous words of Dr. Laura: "Now go do the right thing." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I used to listen to Dr. Laura.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, there's a reference to tonight, you're going to be approving a project. That's not what's on the agenda tonight. What's on the agenda in closed session is a discussion about an easement. There's no project being approved tonight.
Okay. Duly noted. Okay, anyone else? No one rising. We're going to close our, yeah, oral communication, and we're going to go into closed session. We have one item on the closed session agenda. It is conference with real property negotiators. And we should be back by 6:30.
I just got back from Italy. I know. I've been trying, just trying to catch up a little bit and kind of plug back in. Have you been there? An amazing trip. Work trip mostly with. Idea photography. Wine Magazine. I've been going back in October. How'd the meeting go? This is at the end of the day. We do have more. We do have that. How many are certainly in this? How they get into that. And then you have some of the. So. Hey. Whoops. Is it over here? No. That's it. Hope it's even.
Good evening. Welcome to the Long Polk City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is five thirty P M. If you have not already done so, I'd like to remind you to silence your cell phones. Either turn them off or put them on stun. We've already had roll call. We're returning from closed session. And Madam Attorney, could you give us a report on closed session?
Certainly. There was one item to discuss. It was discussed, but there was no reportable action. And for the record, Councilman Moby is now on the dais present.
Okay. That sounds good. And if you'll please rise for your invocation, remove your hats. And Reverend Michael Cook. Is Reverend Cook in the audience? But I see Pastor Federman here. Put you on the spot, Marine.
Always ready, sir.
Okay.
Well, let us pray. Dear God, we humbly come before you this night, asking you again for wisdom and grace for our leaders. Thank you for the service they provide. Thank you for their willingness to lead us. And I pray, God, that you continue to watch over our city, be with our police and our fire who protect us and watch over us. And on this special week, Law Enforcement Memorial Week, we pray gratitude prayer for those who have given their lives in the line of duty and service for the safety of others. We pray for their families as they remember their loss, and may we always support and protect those who support and protect us. Again, thank you for this night. Watch over our community in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. So at the end of last meeting, on the second, a mistake was made. The council came out of closed session and inadvertently, probably some staff, we locked the front door because no one else was in City Hall. Locked the front door. We came out of closed session to report out closed session, and we did, even though we, we did not have the doors open, so the public could not come in to see what was being reported out. Nothing illegal took place. We had nothing to report. I apologize for that, especially if anyone was waiting outside, and I believe at least one person was. I apologize for that happening. I can assure you that it will not happen again. We're going to make sure that when we come out of closed session, if it's late, we'll go and check that door. But to make up for that, what I'd like to do is redo the action that did take place. We took no action, but we had a council request at that time. So I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Osborne to redo her request so we can move forward and sort of make up for it not happening then.
So my council request at the end of the meeting was to bring back a discussion of the cannabis tax measure, and I would like to have support of that.
Okay. Councilmember Vega, you had a second?
I'll second, yes, sir.
Okay. And I gave her a third. Okay. So it is on the agenda tonight. We will be discussing it. So again, it was a mistake. It should not have happened. It won't happen again, and we're sorry for it. Okay. There were no presentations elsewhere, but I have a couple proclamations that I'm going to read today. Okay. Do we have some from the, please, Police Chief? Is Police Chief here? Okay.
Good evening. Welcome to the Long Polk City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is five thirty P M. If you have not already done so, I'd like to remind you to silence your cell phones. Either turn them off or put them on stun. We've already had roll call. We're returning from closed session. And Madam Attorney, could you give us a report on closed session?
Certainly. There was one item to discuss. It was discussed, but there was no reportable action. And for the record, Councilman Moby is now on the dais present.
Okay. That sounds good. And if you'll please rise for your invocation, remove your hats. And Reverend Michael Cook. Is Reverend Cook in the audience? But I see Pastor Federman here. I'll put you on the spot, Marine.
Always ready, sir.
Okay.
Well, let us pray. Dear God, we humbly come before you this night, asking you again for wisdom and grace for our leaders. Thank you for the service they provide. Thank you for their willingness to lead us. And I pray, God, that you continue to watch over our city, be with our police and our fire who protect us and watch over us. And on this special week, Law Enforcement Memorial Week, we pray gratitude prayer for those who have given their lives in the line of duty and service for the safety of others. We pray for their families as they remember their loss, and may we always support and protect those who support and protect us. Again, thank you for this night. Watch over our community in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. So at the end of last meeting, on the second, a mistake was made. The council came out of closed session and inadvertently, probably some staff, we locked the front door because no one else was in City Hall. Locked the front door. We came out of closed session to report out closed session, and we did, even though we, we did not have the doors open, so the public could not come in to see what was being reported out. Nothing illegal took place. We had nothing to report. I apologize for that, especially if anyone was waiting outside, and I believe at least one person was. I apologize for that happening. I can assure you that it will not happen again. We're going to make sure that when we come out of closed session, if it's late, we'll go and check that door. But to make up for that, what I'd like to do is redo the action that did take place. We took no action, but we had a council request at that time. So I'd like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Osborne to redo her request so we can move forward and sort of make up for it not happening then.
So my council request at the end of the meeting was to bring back a discussion of the cannabis tax measure, and I would like to have support of that.
Okay. Councilmember Vega, you had a second?
I'll second, yes, sir.
Okay. And I gave her a third. Okay. So it is on the agenda tonight. We will be discussing it. So again, it was a mistake. It should not have happened. It won't happen again, and we're sorry for it. Okay. There were no presentations elsewhere, but I have a couple proclamations that I'm going to read today. Okay. Do we have some from the, please, Police Chief? Is Police Chief here? Okay. Good evening. Good evening. Okay. This is a proclamation recognizing, okay, on May 15, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 13 through May 19, 2018, as Police Week. Whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. And whereas, on Peace Officers Memorial Day and during Police Week, we acknowledge the incredible service and sacrifices law enforcement personnel make each day. The brave men and women of our city law enforcement work long hours, often in dangerous situations to protect our lives, liberty, and property. And whereas, the safety and health of our officers must be the priority of all Americans. Every day, members of law enforcement risk their lives in service to those they have pledged to protect and defend. We must not take their devotion to duty for granted. And whereas, we also take this opportunity to pay tribute to law enforcement personnel who have been killed in the line of duty. Nationally, a total of nine hundred and, excuse me, thank God, not nine hundred, a total of 93 officers were killed in the line of duty this past year. And whereas, the work of law enforcement officers is essential to preserving peace in our communities and of ensuring safety of precious lives and property. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingel, Mayor, City of Lompoke, California, do hereby call upon the citizens of Lompoke to observe Peace Officer Memorial Day on May 15, 2018, and the week in which it falls as Police Week, May 13 through the 19th, to recognize and appreciate the vital role the City of Lompoke's hard-working law enforcement officers play in keeping our city safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Lingel. So this is a pretty honorable week for us in law enforcement. Like the mayor said, we've had a lot of felonious murders of police officers lately, and a lot of police officers killed in line of duty for other reasons. So it's meaningful to us that you would give us this proclamation. Tomorrow, we're going to have open house, police open house. We like to do that every Memorial Week. And at 4 o'clock, we're actually going to have a moment of silence, and Chaplain Federman's going to say a prayer for those that have lost their lives in line of duty. So thank you for this.
Okay. Okay. This is proclamation, Building Safety Month. Whereas, the City of Lompoke is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in the times of natural disaster. And whereas, our confidence in the structure's integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion and diligence building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in our construction industry to work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council of the United States, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the build environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. And whereas, our nation's benefits economically, technically, by using the international codes that are developed by the National Voluntary Consensus Codes and standards, developing organizations, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation. These modern building codes include safeguards protect the public from natural disasters such as wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely-known guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keep America great. And whereas, building codes saves lives. The theme in the Building Safety Month of 2018 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the place where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe, and recognizes that the countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by our local and state agencies. And whereas, each year, our observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment in our homes and in our community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided by all of us in the local, state, building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingel, Mayor, City of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2018, as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage all citizens, join in their communities in participation of Building Safety Month activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, it's my great pleasure to introduce our new building services manager, Al Johnson. He is a certified building official. He is here to serve our community, and what better time during our May Building and Life Safety Month? So thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you to the City of Lompoke. Everybody's made me feel very welcome. So thank you, and thank you to council.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'd like to share with you that the Lompoke Valley Kennel Club has elected not to have their event this year, and that is because Pete DeSoto, who has run and organized that for years, has stepped down, and also because they do not have enough resources to produce the show. The new lead for the Kennel Club indicated that there's been a decrease in participation in the show over the years, and that has affected revenues for the club. They also commented on the condition of the park as another factor in their decision not to have the show this year. We will continue to be in touch with them in case they want to do a show next year at a park in Lompoke. So we will continue to be in touch with them. And on another note, the city has recently had an audit that looks at how we handle claims, and I'm pleased to share with you that the audit found the city handles its claims well, from providing a good initial investigation to recognizing claims that are appropriate for resolution through negotiation. The city performed well on all factors of that audit. And last but not least, I'd like to invite Captain Clement up to provide an update on the plan for the cleanup of the Senes Riverbed.
Homelessness has become an issue within the City of Lompoke, and it's not an issue that we are going to resolve overnight. So I've come up with a plan that is an eight-phase plan, and because it's going to be a slow-moving plan, I'm hoping that it is going to be a long-term plan, and our homeless issues will be dealt with and not go away overnight, but not to come back to the point where they are now. So we're going to start with, I'm working with restorative groups throughout the community, Good Samaritan Shelter, Home for Good, United Way, and some of the church groups. We've been meeting. They are going into the riverbed and identifying people and their camps, and letting them know that there soon will be an abatement process going on into the riverbed. Officers are going down into the riverbed also, sometimes with these groups, and deputies are going down with them, sheriff's deputies are also on board, and going down and identifying the encampments and the people who live there, and letting them know that it is time for them to move on and move out of Lompoke. The restorative groups are working on finding these people permanent housing, whether it be with reuniting them with family members, finding them housing through Section 8, or some other type of low-income housing, or even temporary shelter housing. They are all working into getting these people into new homes where they will stay. They're also offering substance abuse counseling and veterans outreach to try and get them back into a healthy lifestyle. Once we have identified all of the people who are living in the riverbed, we don't want to just push them onto the streets of Lompoke. We are going to try and rehouse them. They will be placed into housing if we can find it. If not, we're trying to establish a triage center. Where that is going to be has not been determined yet. That is in the planning phases right now. Once they are into the triage center, they will be offered services. None of these people are going to be pushed to any place without services being provided to them. So through the triage center, they will be offered services. The triage center will be a, you can go in, you can receive services, you can stay there while you're receiving services, and then we are going to point you to a direction where you're going to become, to move on from the triage center. We also are going to send out 30-day notices to those people who have not moved on their own, and we will be telling those people that we will abate their homeless encampments. During that time, they will be notified that all the services are available to them, and once the 30 days is up, they will be told they have to leave. And we are looking for council support in, we're going to need some city support, some council support. In doing this, we are going to have to have dumpsters. We're going to have to have heavy machinery to go down into the riverbed to clean up the encampments. There are numerous heavily populated encampments where they have set up basic houses within the riverbed. It is not going to be an overnight cleanup. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of pounds of debris and trash and construction that have taken place in the riverbed. When the people are told they have to leave, they will be told to take whatever belongings they want or need, and everything else will be considered as abandoned property. They can take what they want, what they can carry away, they can take. We would not have a problem with that. We're hoping that they are going to self-clean up some before. The restorative groups have been working on that, getting them to take the trash out. Planning a seat has done a good job in getting cleanup taken care of down in the riverbed. After the notification, they will have to leave, and if they don't, they will then be issued a citation if they do not leave. We are hoping that it does not come to that point, that we won't have to take any criminal action against them, that they will leave on their own. After the homeless encampments have been cleaned up and the population has left, we are going to continue to monitor the encampments, sending officers down there and not letting it get to the point where it has gotten to now. And that's going to take daily, and then weekly, and then monthly monitoring to not let it get to the point where it is. They will not be allowed to set up the camps that they have established into the riverbed And as you can see, this is not a short-term plan. It is going to take months and months of work to get these encampments abated from the riverbed, and then the follow-up is going to be long-term also. Did you have any questions?
Councilmember Starbuck.
What agencies are going to assist us with this?
What is what?
What agencies will assist you with this?
We have the sheriff's department on board. We have talked to state parks. We have Fish and Wildlife that we've talked to. We've talked to many community groups. All of the churches, well, many of the churches in the town have expressed interest in helping us out. Home for Good, United Way, AmeriCorps, the county, the Board of Supervisors. There's been meetings with a lot of different people.
Captain, I want to thank you, and Chief Walsh, and the rest of the staff that's been working on this. I know it's not an easy thing, and we don't expect you to get it taken care of overnight. We realize it's going to take a while. We're just glad something is happening right now. As you realize, because you get the calls as well, I get, and I'm sure many of our councilmembers are getting the same thing, complaints from citizens as people are moving out, they're ending up camping on private property right now outside of the river bottom. What can a private citizen do? I mean, unfortunately, I tell them to call you guys. What can they, I know you don't want them to take action on their own, so what can they do?
Right. For the business owners within the city, we have a trespassing letter that they can sign that asks us to enforce the trespassing laws on their business. And we have several businesses that have signed that trespassing letter. If they have someone who is trespassing on their property, we will go and take action, tell the people they cannot be there. If they return, we will then take action on that, criminal action on that.
Okay. And then, once we get it cleaned, I know, I don't know if it's been proposed here, but I think there's some cities that post signs saying, "No overnight camping." Are we going to do something like that in the riverbed? Or are we just going to keep on monitoring it and make sure that they don't set up little camps?
We can post, "No camping allowed, no trespassing." There are no trespassing signs out there in some areas, so we can do that in the future. Some of those no trespassing signs have been taken, though, and moved to actual encampments.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we can do that.
Okay. Well, whatever, you're the experts, whatever you think is best. But we appreciate it. The citizens appreciate it. I know it's not easy, and we look forward to the end result.
Yes. I'm hoping that it will work out well. It's a long process. These are people that we're dealing with, and so we want to do it very fairly.
It took years to get where we are today, so I mean, hopefully it doesn't take years to undo it, but I know it's not going to be quick.
All right.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. City manager, anything else? Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Moby.
Do you have an update on how many cannabis permits have been applied for?
Yes, eight.
Do you have an update on the Bailey Corridor LAFCO annexation permit?
We need to have a second meeting with the county, and a couple weeks ago, we reached out to let them know we still want to do that. We've been in contact with them, and we should be getting a meeting soon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay. Public comment on the consent calendar. You have up to three minutes to speak to us, anything on the consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered to be routine and will be passed with one motion and a vote by the council unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member choose to pull an item? Does any council member choose to pull an item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Councilor Vega.
I'll make a motion that we approve consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, see, no staff presentations? Okay, no staff presentations. Oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item that can come before the council.
Good evening, council members. John Lynn Lompoc resident. First, I appreciate the redo of the motion from the other evening. I did watch that meeting, 'cause I was out of town. However, I did note that the motion made this evening was very substantially different from the one that was made at the close of the meeting the other night. So you may wanna talk about that. But that's not what I came up here to talk to you about. Today, I wanted to talk to you about the fact that our parks are in increasing disrepair, which I think you all understand, but perhaps you're not familiar with the reason. We have only four people maintaining our parks. Back in about 2009, we had 11 people maintaining the same parks. So obviously, it's very difficult for four people to do the work of 11. We have had seven people doing the work of 11 and doing a pretty good job keeping the parks up. But at the same time, we seem to have placed an emphasis on code enforcement. I know that's one of the mayor's pet peeves in life, but today, we seem to have three planners and a code enforcement officer, so we have four people working on code enforcement. This proactive code enforcement now includes going to businesses and looking back at things that have been done, in some cases, as far as 15 and 20 years back, and saying, "Well, you know, you didn't do the right thing here, so now you need to catch up on all of that." And the program's been successful. There's a large business in town with 30 employees that's just announced that they're sick of it and they're moving to Santa Maria. And it also seems that we're now looking over people's back fences into their yards or peeking through the boards. And that's quite a ways beyond what the council authorized when we served on it. So I wanted to remind everyone, and I brought a copy of, of a document, one for you, of course, that describes what it was that the council authorized and that Bob and I worked on a very long time ago. And I hope that you, as a council, will consider whether or not code enforcement is as valuable as maintaining our parks and sports fields. I don't think it is. I think our money is being misspent on things that are less important rather than on things that are more important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mark O'Smalle, citizen. Thank you, council. So the topic of code enforcement, and the mayor had a lovely speech and announcement earlier to the fire marshal. And what I was coming up today is actually is part of code enforcement. We have a school that is located at 820 North H Street that is not, hasn't kept up to code, so I think there's a bias as to code enforcement. They must be going after things that they, that they feel, you know, are important and some that are not. So there's, we would like to put a dispensary there on H Street. We have a lease in terms, but we're waiting to see what happens with the school, because the school, the dot that is on that school shouldn't be there. The school's not permitted to be there, doesn't have the right fire suppressions, I don't believe it has the proper handicap zoning. I think we go, as a society, we tend to look the other way. A good case was the case in Berkeley, where there was a, someone who owned a property and allowed people to live there. Obviously, he was, you know, feeling like, wow, I need this, these people need a place to live, but if you don't follow the proper code enforcement, things can happen, and there was a fire there and the people perished. Same thing with, you know, a school. If it's not in the proper place with the proper enforcements, then we put people in danger. And that was part of Code Enforcement Month, was, I think you mentioned it twice, was the safety of where we're educated. So I hope that the marshal looks into this complaint that I had already filed, and I hope that they continue to push forward with at least removing the dot until the school comes to compliance. And then, you know, I have no problem with the school staying there as long as they're compliant. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close oral communication, and we'll move on to item number four, which is an appointment. And Ms. Splyam. Is Sarah here? Oh, did you wanna do a report on this? Okay, well, that's okay. You don't have to. Okay, so every year, every certain, we appoint a person that represents city of Lompoc, it's a Lompoc city resident, in the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee. Ms. Alice Downe has been doing this for the last couple of years, and she has agreed to be reappointed, so I will entertain a motion to reappoint if, unless there's someone else. Is there someone else that we'd like to nominate for this? If not, would someone like to nominate Alice Downe to serve another term?
I support staff recommendation to appoint Alice Downe to the County Library Advisory Committee.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion. Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Good job, Sarah. Okay, move on to, no, we have, okay, item number five is another appointment. It is appointment to the Economic Development Committee. We have two at-large positions and one associate position. We have one applicant, and Councilor Vega and Councilor Mosby, you can fight over that one applicant if you'd like. Councilor Vega?
I haven't spoken to Mr. Madsen, but I think that he would be, unless he wants a longer term here, depending on where we go, I'd be happy to appoint him as my appointee on the economic development if he so chooses to take that position. Otherwise, you have a choice of an at larger, larger associate position. So that's my motion. Actually, I'd like to make him an appointee. I think he'd be a stellar appointment to the economic development.
Okay, it's been moved to appoint Mr. Madsen to the Economic Development Committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Madsen, you've been asked if you want the position. Would you like to come up and talk to us real quick?
Good evening, city council. Good evening, mayor. I do accept the nomination, I appreciate it. Just looking for more ways to serve in the community. I look forward to it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Gonna move on to item number six, which is Adoption of Resolution Number 6181 (18), approving a declaration of nuisance and abatement order for weeds and debris. This is Fire Marshal Dina. Okay, Dina Pashke.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and community members. My name is Dina Pashke, Fire Marshal Battalion Chief for the city. We are looking for staff recommendations to the city council regarding an adoption of resolution under the government code for our annual weed abatement program or provide alternative direction. So in accordance with the fire department's mission for community risk reduction, one of the things we're tasked at is making our community much more resilient from the different hazards, one of them being wildfire. We've found that there are potential for regrowth in lots that have not been mowed, some that have been mowed but may regrow again. This year, we have experienced a late season of rain, which we're thankful for, but as such, we have the potential to have some late growth and some regrowth. We're seeing some of that along the areas of where Caltrans had done some work, it's already come back in some of the medians. The weeds and grass growth is considered the light and flashy fuels, which is primarily one of our concerns, to move fire rapidly, which is of concern for our fire department because the quicker it does spread, the less time we have to respond and get over there and to take defensible actions to save life property. One of the things we do is try and eliminate some of that vegetation and take down some of these weeds. We're, maybe you saw on the news, one of the counties was inundated by tumbleweeds not too many weeks ago. Now, think about those tumbleweeds if they were on fire. That's essentially what firebrands are. They can spread fire a mile, two miles down range from where the fire's coming from, let alone with our winds. So the threat to our city from wildfires is real, and it's been demonstrated and tested, really, for the last four years. Unfortunately, we have a fire history each of those years. We had the Rucker Fire last year, which had a pretty ominous look to the city. If you remember, the year before, we were threatened by the Canyon Fire in 2016, which was on base, wind-driven, and in fact, we closed City Hall a little early because it filled up with smoke because the automatic doors kept opening. We also had the Mesa Fire in 2015, where we saw a lot of air drops, and it kinda really kicked off in 2014 with the Magalito Fire, when a lot of us here could see the DC-10 doing a free jettison drop, luckily, which is our perfect scenario. They had to empty their load because it's too heavy to land the DC-10 fully loaded with retardant at the Santa Maria Air Tanker Base. So to proceed with our weed abatement conditions, we need, city council must determine that it's hazardous and dangerous to our community and to set a public hearing for objections. This is part of the annual process we do, and it's based on a calendar year. So this would take us into the end of this year, and this process gets repeated annually. We get to a point where we try and do everything we can to have the weeds taken care of by the homeowner, and over the last few years, I'd say it was very successful. We've really only had to force two properties that I can even think of. So that's, that's the very last case scenario. Now, it reads that we're gonna force everything, and it's, it reads kinda scary, but that's certainly not how we take our approach. We partner, we meet people out at the sites, discuss with them, discuss with the HOAs. So the fiscal impact to eventually, the homeowner could be placed in a type of tax lien teeter plan. That's way, way down the road, and we try and avoid that at all costs. So the weed abatement program essentially is a cost recovery for when we have points of failure. Other than that, it is covered as it stated in the report here in the general fund. So for this evening, what we're looking for is either the adoption to continue with our weed abatement program for this year, or for the city council to give us some alternative direction. And our adoption would be the 6181 adoption before you that was presented. And if I can entertain any of council's questions or concerns, I'd be happy to do that.
Any questions? Councilor Vega?
Dina, the letters that are sent out, maybe you could kind of explain the process, whether it's one letter, two letters. You know, in our staff report, it says letters sent. Is that a singular letter, or has it been more than one? Or maybe you could explain that to the public.
Great question. Thank you. So the first letter essentially is kind of giving people notice, hey, things are starting to dry out, we really need your participation. Some people actually have participated before they get the notice, but it may regrow, or they were in that awkward, it was inspected, they mowed the next day, and the letter still went out. So this letter went out to give everybody pretty much 30 days' notice to say, hey, we're gonna come back around, we wanna check. There's a second letter that goes out. Usually, I have to send maybe a quarter of the first round of letters on the second letter. That decreases the time period to about 14 days that they really need to mow. By then, if I'm not getting compliance, I probably have a relationship with that parcel, or maybe they live in Utah, or just some other circumstance. I'll make physical phone calls and try to reach out to them. My contact information is on both letters, so they can get ahold of me by email or by phone. I can send pictures to out-of-state owners as well. That really helps educate what they need their gardener to do. Sometimes, they need me to go meet the gardeners. A lot of contract gardeners here wave at me because they know we've all met at site to discuss the scope of work. After that second letter, we come back for a public hearing. If there's any, anybody that hasn't done, done what they needed to do, that's when the latter part of the government code says we need to go in and abate it. But again, I stress that that is the last thing we really wanna do.
So we're here right now after the second letter, is that correct?
This is the first letter.
This is the first letter?
The very first letter. We're here with kind of preseason, high-fire hazards, come here, the wind's drying out, we really need the committee help.
And then, correct me if I misunderstood, so the public hearing and the moving forward was done after the first letter, is that correct?
I might prefer.
Being done, because I thought maybe it was after the second letter was sent out that we would be sitting here, right here, waiting for an approval.
Actually, the second letter, we've done by consent calendar as well in the past, but that's the one, the second letter, goes out, notifies people, but that doesn't force the abatement. It's not until they don't comply with that second letter.
Another question, the criteria from which you designate a property that needs some sort of abatement, is there some sort of a, kind of a standard that you use so that people can't say that, hey, you're targeting a certain area or something just because it's on a different demographic? Not a personal targeting, I'm just talking about, hey, because one has an easier access than the other or, or not. You know, I'm not sure how you deal with that with the public. I'm not asking you to justify, I'm just saying, hey, when people approach you, is it a foot long, two foot, or? I'm not saying you probably go out there with a ruler, but I'm saying, you know, because you're looking for a fire hazard, correct?
Correct. It has to be deemed fire hazard. It originally started with just the vacant lots in town. We've had a lot of infill, the vacant lots are going down. In fact, we have a beautiful hotel that used to be a lot now, so that, that number's decreasing. But we do, we do a risk analysis. What are our threats to our city? Hill sides? Anytime we have houses below or above a hill that the wind can drive a fire to it, changes the speed of fire. So we really need to target hazard, if you will, that area. It has nothing to do with who owns those properties. We're worried about their safety. So we'll go and explore hillside areas, Crestview Terrace or above the old drive-in. As far as deeming what is a fire hazard, we were pretty reserved about this. This is an encouraging portion to get things so we don't really become a full-blown interior islands that could be lit on fire from fires that are other jurisdictions threatening our town. So in, in weed abatement, as far as the code enforcement, there's some code speak that says 50% of maybe somebody's front yard is over a foot tall. That's, that's not how we assess it. We assess, is there a fire hazard or potential to be one with the regrowth that can occur? And then die back, because these are places where they're not being, they're not planned, so they're not watered afterwards. We're okay with growth if it stayed green and it had a, you know, maybe some fire resilience, but not stuff that's gonna die, diurnal grasses seasonally and turn brown for the next high-fire portion of our year, which is, as we know, after the Thomas Fire, almost all year long.
So the majority of the people that are on this list, or any list, have been mostly compliant with, according to what your statement was, you've only had to force maybe four people, you're saying, maybe to do the weed abatement? Otherwise, are you, are you in there and being as an advisor where you have an elderly couple or disabled person and to actually give them a connection to where they can actually hire it out or something? Is that part of the process?
Absolutely. In fact, I have a couple that might fit that demographic that live in the village, and I'll, I'll go meet with them at their house, go help them, because I know that they don't get out, and maybe they haven't seen their property. After that first couple times of having to do that a couple years, they automatically know who to contact, they know what to do. Those are like our success stories. As we discover them, we certainly, that would be a perfect way to do a focal point of community risk reduction, which is completely within our mission and pretty passionate to make sure.
So one more question, if I could, okay? On the, on the weed abatement, it says provide alternate direction, okay? Maybe you could give me a scenario, maybe, where the alternate direction would take place, or obviously, this would be your first choice, but I'm not sure if you had something else in mind that would've worked or not. I'm sure you're probably not gonna wanna say anything about, because this is your first choice, you know? But what would've been the other alternate direction? After the second letter, we're here, would that have been something that maybe could be changed, you know, instead of after the first letter, as far as the notice?
From my understanding, and legal can advise if I don't say it quietly, elegantly as he can, is it's a, it's a formal process of the government code, there's certain timeframes, there's certain notifications, and you kinda have to check the boxes just in case you get one of those outliers that doesn't take care of their property. So deviating from that, I from that, I wouldn't be, have advisement without possibly our Joe saying how that would be done.
But our versatility could incorporate something different if we chose to. Is that correct?
Well, first, the reference to provide alternate direction, that's sort of the typical statement that we always put in our staff reports because the council may have some other idea. So that's why that language is in there. With regard to the process we're following, the Fire Marshal is correct. It's very, laid out very clearly in the government code, so we need to make sure we dot all the i's and cross all the t's. In addition to that process, if the council want to suggest that we send some additional letter or something to property owners to advise them of the need, that's something you could direct, but that would be in addition to the process that's already set up.
Gotcha. I just wanted that clarified, so everybody knows what our choices and alternatives would be. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also clarify, we have this set up. We're a little flexible. So when we had these late rains, we're mowing two weeks later than we did last year, so we can help prevent our, our good parcel owners to not have to re-mow, yet we'll still be ahead by deadline before we start selling safe and sane fireworks, which is another one of our concerns.
One more question, if I could, please. So city properties that, you know, we've had reports that maybe there's lack of maintenance on some of the city properties. Now, of course, we're suffering a manpower shortage in, in some areas. How are those referenced, and how do you guys take care of them? You know, we've had reports that said, hey, we should lead by example. So how would you reference that, or is that something you would just kind of not reference that, you know, as one of your primary goals?
Well, thank you. We, we should always lead by example. And we've been working very diligently on the city properties for quite some time. One thing with the weeds is when it hits, when it rains, the rains stop, and the weeds are all there. So they try and get the contractors in, which Public Works handles a lot of those spaces. They have contractors that go out and do some of that work, because as you heard, we had four people, if that's the current staffing for parks, so that it's not, the workload's not transcended to parks. But Public Works is ahead of what I'm doing as well. We are in constant communication. I make sure that I, if I, in the course of me doing any of my other rounds, I see anything that's city-owned, I immediately go right to the head that I need to, and they disperse, and they, they have it on their list. I will say that normally, we're behind on like, say, the V Street drainages and the ditches, and we were ahead of it this year. You'll see at the base, it's starting to regrow. I even keep my eye on the city properties for regrowth, and we try and govern ourselves just, just as tight as anyone else. Definitely.
And my question is just referencing, so the public knows that it's being dealt with, and someone is getting it reported to, and the resources are being looked forward to make sure that we're leading by example, which I, I would expect that we would do.
We do, and I report directly to the Public Works Director. I make sure I keep the Fire Chief in the loop, and I usually get back, okay, my crew's set up to do that in a week or two. And we're, we've been hedging that ahead of, ahead of the game for quite some time. We also get, when we get weed abatement or concerns that are city property, there's a couple in town that we usually get annually. We ma, I make sure that those get forwarded as well to Public Works to make sure that they handle their properties as deemed. There's even one that used to be, was it Charlotte's Web? Like, that seems to reoccur. So absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so Councilor Vega took care of one of mine. I had calls from two different citizens after they saw the list. One of them was city property, so that's been addressed. And the other one is, I don't want to give you the address, but I'll just let you know. Take a look, the first block on the south side of Sheffield Drive. There's a property that someone has complained about to me and asked-
I'm familiar with that complaint, and what I did is I asked that homeowner to help me, because I'm an army of one, and I try and tackle everything I can. That homeowner provided me by text pictures of, there was a hazard, a tree, just like many trees through drought or the pine beetle died. I provided that tree picture to the people that own it in San Luis Obispo.
Okay. Okay, so that's, both those are being addressed then, so, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dina? Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, I, oh, public comment. Public comment on this. Seeing the old rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Discussion? Entertain a motion?
I move to accept adoption of Resolution 6181, paragraph 18, parentheses 18, approving a declaration of nuisance and abatement order for weeds and debris.
I'll second that motion. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, we're going to move on now to item number seven, which is adoption of Resolution Number 6180, parentheses 18, declaring results of majority protest proceedings and renewing the Lompoc Tourism Improvement District. And that is Jasmine.
Sorry about the technical difficulties. Good eve, good evening, members of the council. I'm Jasmine McGinty, Development Program Specialist in Economic Development. Hopefully, that filter goes away in just a quick moment here. So tonight, we recommend the, that we adopt Resolution 6118 to renew the Lompoc Tourism Improvement District for 10 years, and with that, approve the proposed increases in the assessment fee from 2% to 5% over the 10-year term, and the city administration fee from 1% to 2% over that 10-year term as well, or provide alternate direction. So the Resolution 6180 renews the, will renew, if approved, will renew the Lompoc Tourism Improvement District for 10 years, to expire in 2028. That, that assessment would begin in 2019. So hoteliers have requested the City Council renew this for 10 years in order to maintain a revenue source devoted to marketing, marketing and promoting Lompoc as a travel destination. So just a quick little background on how the T-bids work. Hotels pay an assessment, folks that stay at the, at the hotels. It is currently a 2% assessment, and is proposed to increase to 5% over the 10-year term if approved. That assessment is then collected by local government and then managed by the DMO, in this case, Visit Lompoc. They were first created in 2013 for a five-year term, and now we are asking to propose that renewal, excuse me, renew that proposal for 10-year life, for, to expire in December 31st, 2028. On March 20th, the City Council adopted Resolution 6164, which declared the intent to renew this district. This is just a photo of the improvement district boundaries in Lompoc. Currently includes 13 lodging facilities. So tonight, the management district plan, which was provided, provides Visit Lompoc the authority to increase that annual assessment rate. Those assess, those increases in assessment which propose, which we are proposing are going to be presented to the council during the annual reporting period, which will be March of each year. The MDP, Management District Plan, provides projections of the assessment collected at a 2% rate, 3% rate, 4% rate, and 5% rate, which is proposed. It also provides an estimate of overall growth of 3% per year in collections. This is to account for higher stay rates, higher occupancy, or a combination of both. So this chart here, it's kind of hard to see, but it shows the assessment rates at 2% on the far right-hand column. If the assessment were to stay at a 2% rate for the 10-year term, these are the rates it would be. And the initial rate is $360,000, and if it stays at 2% for the 10 years, it would go up to $468,000. If approved, as presented in this report, to go up to 5%, the assessment rate can go up to a million, a little over a million dollars there, and that's a difference of approximately $700,000. That money would be used for marketing and promoting Lompoc as a tourist destination. Page seven of the management district plan shows this chart with those proposed increases. In the management district plan, we show the proposed boundary, which I showed a little bit earlier. The service plan and budget and proposed means of government on how Visit Lompoc will use those dollars. In review of the management district plan, there are a few changes to the, the plan that we, I wanted to present to you tonight. Those changes are, the first one is staff will consult with the collection agent. Will consult with the collections agent, but retains the right to hire a collections agent of choice. This change was because the city uses the same collections agent for all billings, so it allows for the ability to provide efficient collection and billing services. The next change that we did make to that is to the original delinquency penalty of 10%, with a minimum of 200 per occurrence, and a little change to the fraud to be a minimum of 25% or $500, whichever is more. This is, was made to account for small operator delinquencies. Another minor change we did make was the collection of the assessment from a quarterly basis to a monthly basis, and that is to comply with current practice for collecting the assessment. Current is, currently is on a monthly, so we wanted to have it consistent with collection of the city's TOT. The last change is the annual reporting period. We changed it to be presented to the second meeting, the second City Council meeting in March. It was to be presented in the current district plan. It's to be presented at the end of the calendar year. We are proposing a change to be 60 days after that end of the calendar year, to make sure there's sufficient time for the assessments to be collected, and we can have a more accurate report. Another proposed change we are asking the council to consider is an increase in the annual city administration fee. This chart on the right here shows the initial budget for the bid. The first year would be $360,000, and the city administration fee is a 1%. It'll stay 1% for the first year, and we're proposing that increase to 0.1% annually, to be a maximum of 2% at the end of 2028. And that is to account for rising costs in services, in services and inflation. So the one person, the point, I'm sorry, the 0.1% increase would be presented to the council during the annual reporting period for the council to approve or deny. And so the annual report will be given at, in March at the end of each year, which is another change that we proposed to make. Page 21 of the MDP states, states, state statute 36650, which states what should be in the annual report, and it set, states that the different allocations of the budget can be changed and altered by council, which would be presented by Visit Lompoc during those, during those annual reports. So that is the last change we are proposing. Here's just a quick timeline for the renewal. Back in March 2020, we had the declaration of intent to renew, and now we are in our public hearing period. So if it is passed tonight, we shall adopt a resolution of formation, and we plan to bring the management agreement between Visit Lompoc and the city forth to you guys in July of 2018. And if passed, this assessment would not begin until January 1st, 2019. So tonight, we are asking if you could adopt, we recommend the adoption of Resolution 6180 with these changes, where the assessment fee would increase from 2% to 5% over the 10-year term, and the city administration fee from 1% to 2% over the 10-year term, or provide alternate, alternate direction. And I appreciate your guys' time. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Councilor Starbuck?
I see a couple of members of the Visit Lompoc Board here. Is there any issues with the proposed staff changes? Do they have any?
I will refer to Mr. Patel to answer that.
We agree with the changes, so we have no objection to the changes.
Mr. Patel, while you're up there, so the, just for the public, the current 2%, that's in addition to the regular bed tax. Is that correct, or has it come out of bed tax?
Yes. The city of Lompoc has a 10% bed tax, and when we formed the Tourism Business Improvement District with the guidelines from the state, five years ago, we chose to have a 2% assessment, and we collect the $360,000 roughly. It's increased over the years, and we used 85% of that money is directly for marketing and promoting Lompoc and tourism. 10% is for administration from postage to our office space. 1% is to the city, and 4% is reserve. We've kind of looked at the tiers on how we would like, we went for a 10-year term, because if we come back here every five years, just to process and go through the legal motions, this whole thing runs about $40,000. So if we came back every five years, we'd be spending almost $80,000. So just by spending this, we wanted a 10-year term. We looked at the marketing budget and the competitive sets with the hotels that are being built within a 50-mile radius, and the 11 hotels and the seven board members felt that as we move in the future, Lompoc definitely will have to increase its marketing. Otherwise, we're going to be outrun by Galita, which has, has 300 new hotel rooms that opened up. Buellton's has 100 that's opened up. There's 150 hotel rooms that are coming into Buellton within the next two years. Santa Maria just broke ground on another 100 rooms and potentially more Pismo. And so within a 60-mile radius, there's over 1,000 rooms that are on the 101 corridor. So we want to increase our spending on the marketing, just like doing joint ventures with certain organizations and doing the marketing on, on media and, you know, electronic media.
So, thank you very much for everything you do. I mean, it's a, it's been suc, very successful, as evidenced by this past weekend with the Mission to Mars.
Yes.
I hope the public realizes the amount of work that Explore Lompoc put into that endeavor to fill up, I think, filled up every single hotel room in Lompoc. There's probably many in Buellton and Santa Maria and our surrounding area. So we appreciate that, as well as the, I think you give scholarships and everything else. The question that they still remains is, so this, the current 2% is on top of the bed tax?
Correct.
Okay. A couple months ago, well, during the budget, there was a proposal to possibly increase, to get some extra revenue into the city, increase the bed tax by 2%, and the hotels came out against that because they said they were concerned that they'd lose their tourism, the visit, tourism visits, especially the, the buses that come through. Now you're saying it's okay to increase it up to 5%?
No. What we're, that was five years ago, and when we have the buses, the buses that come through are through buses. And what we're doing is what we noticed is, as the economy has gotten better, it's, it's come to the point where as we're marketing more and more people are coming in, it's generating more funds for the city, even just by the new hotel coming up. All these numbers that came in were five, I mean, last year's numbers, but as we market more, we're, we're drawing in more people. By the city, by the city increasing its funds, they're going to be putting it into the general, general fund, and none of those, none of those 2% or 1%, whatever the city increases, it's not going to market anything. First thing, that cities, when this, five years ago, when, when the state came out with the Tourism Business Improvement District, when the economy went bad, the first thing that the state and most city did, did was cut all marketing, and revenues went down. Our assessment is that we continue, we'll need to market more and just look at different people that come into this area.
And I agree with you 100%. And like I say, I think it's extremely successful. But again, my point is, a person coming to Visit Lompoc from, let's say, Arkansas, in sometime in the next 10 years, they'll be paying the equivalent. They, they don't know that the 10% is TOT and the 5% is a T-bid. They just know that they're paying now 15% on top of their, their room rate. Okay? But again, six months ago, when we were having our budget hearings, just us raising from 10% to 2% was going to damage your industry.
Yes.
Why is it not, why now is it not going to damage your industry, that the consumer is now going to be paying up to 15% additional, where-
Well, we put that, we put that in there. That's over 10 years. We're not saying next year-
I realize that, yeah.
Now, the, if the city take, if the city adds a 2%, we'd be at 14%. Now, is the city going to spend that in marketing efforts, or is that going to be used in the general fund? The real question is, is how much marketing do we need to do for Lompoc and promoting, doing the brochures, having NASA come here, picking up the phone, and having NASA or JPL and doing a joint venture with the city, and being able to explore Lompoc to fund- and doing a joint venture with the city and being able to explore Lompoc to fund it immediately so we can have the 4,000 people that came into town. If Explore Lompoc did not reach out to these organizations within the last 90 days, reality, they would have been in Beelton and, what do you call it, Santa Maria. They would not have even looked at the airport. When we approached Teresa and approached JPL, NASA, our premise is what does it take for you to be in Lompoc? And that's where the marketing efforts come in.
And again, you did a fantastic job and we appreciate it. You probably realize, I don't know if the public realizes, that TOT is one of the major resources, revenue resources to the city. We're hurting right now. So I mean, it's, it's tough for me to go back six months and say, you couldn't afford, you, you, actually you did. You fought us on putting out to the, on the ballot, raising the TOT to 12%. And yet now you're willing to raise it equivalent to the 15%.
No, in the future, over 10 years.
I, I realize that, I realize that, so.
It's an option out there. It's not saying we're going to do it next year or for that.
Okay. Okay. I mean, again, you're doing a fantastic job. It's just, it sits a little wrong with me that you objected to us getting 2% and now you're saying that you could possibly an additional 5% for the T-bid over 10 years. Anyway, you're doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Councilor Vega.
Mr. Patel, Paul.
Oh, sorry.
I think your investment should also be noted that there's great value to the city of Lompoc because not only with hotels that are being filled up, which also adds to how much, the amount of TOT that the city is getting by filling up your rooms and by the restaurants and other businesses that benefit from this, I think that there should be, I understand what the mayor, his statement is. The numbers seem a little bit askew, but I think in their long run, it's coming back a different direction to Lompoc instead of coming directly from the hotels based on just a minimal TOT when you can maximize it. So you guys are counting on your maximum numbers that you're filling up the hotels. So in the end, there's more TOT there to be spent and possibly split up with the city of Lompoc.
Yeah. When, when, when the TOT started, now we have 85 of them. When we started this, I believe we were around 30. The premises on the, on the tourism business district is using these funds to increase occupancy. And once occupancy increases, the customers that are staying at the hotels spend money at gas stations, restaurants and buying, you know, at stores. So it's a trickle-down effect. Just this, you know, past week when we had NASA, we had what, about 4,000 people that would not have entered the city of Lompoc. Most hotels were sold out for three to four days. All of those, you know, people that came into town, they were eating at restaurants, filling up gas. There was, you know, there was a tremendous amount of money immediately that was spent. And our premise is as we move forward, we would like to make sure that we have these type of events more often in Lompoc, specifically as Vandenberg Air Force Base gears up on its launches. Because we, not only do we have tourism and wineries, but the base is a major attraction and we want to keep that going.
I'd like to thank you for your guys' involvement. I know that all of you in Explore Lompoc have created an experience there as also as being hosts, so that the experience is going to be memorable when they leave. So there'll be a return visit, which basically that's what we've been striving to accomplish here in Lompoc, is to let people know that, hey, this is a class act. And I think the, the impression here from the mission to Mars had carried great value as far as impressions left by the people and seeing the influx from people from the base, they came in there and, you know, you kind of almost forget that, you know, you think you're somewhere else and you're basically still here in Lompoc. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Ms. McKinty? Okay, thank you. We'll open this up for public comment. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilor Vega.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution 618018 and for the T-bid and Lompoc Tourism Improvement District.
Okay.
I recommend that we accept it.
And we have a second. Okay. Oh, Councilor Molesby.
Yeah, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to item number eight. Item number eight is a council request. Discussion on direction regarding possible commercial cannabis activation activities tax measures. And that is Ms. Calavan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tree Scalavan, interim city manager. And as you mentioned, this is a council request being brought back to you to discuss the matter further. And if the city council directs staff to prepare an ordinance to be placed on the November 2018 ballot, then it also needs to direct us on the amount and the type of taxes that would be proposed. And the proposal that the council request did specify, Mayor Pro-Tim Osborne suggested the following when she sought consensus for this matter to be returned to council. Retail taxed phased in, 6% of gross receipts, 2% for the first year of business, increased by 1% each year to 6% maximum. Manufacturing cultivation, 3% of gross receipts, except nurseries. Nurseries, 1% of gross receipts. Distribution, 1% of gross receipts. Testing, 0%. And micro businesses, a total cap of 6% for all gross receipts for all functions. So SCI group came and presented information to the council about revenues that could be generated by taxes on commercial cannabis activities and demonstrated that that could range anywhere from $700,000 to $3 million annually, depending on what actually is implemented and the applications, businesses that open. The additional cost to the city for having the tax measure on the ballot at the November election is estimated to be approximately $20,000 for a single measure. With that, I'll allow you to discuss the direction you'd like to take and provide staff on this item.
Councilor Starbuck.
Well, the first question I got to ask you about this is if any of these taxes pass, how many new employees do we have to hire? Because I know we would have to hire people to monitor this or to make sure that we've hold this industry accountable.
Well, we, we will see, this is all a very new area. We know there is going to be some monitoring in the future and that is a cost recovery aspect of this that will also need to be addressed. But the resolution that the council approved in the application process is for staff to have cost recovery in that monitoring aspect as well.
That was cost recovery for applications. Now we're talking about taxes forever and annual increases. So who would monitor this then?
This is actually a general fund revenue and actually monitoring and other impacts that go beyond monitoring are covered through this. So monitoring is covering through cost recovery and we'll be bringing that back to you in a year as requested at a previous council meeting. And then the tax provides resources to additional impacts beyond that.
So we don't know the number, but we know we're going to hire people.
That's not a direct equation. We just know that this is a form of revenue that could be looked at to address a variety of different things in the community.
Councilor Molesby.
It seems to me you're saying that part of the permit for cost recovery would be charging the businesses to oversee the potential tax through cost recovery or would that be covered by the tax?
There's two separate avenues here. So this, this evening is the tax measure, which goes into any revenues that would be received due to taxation that was approved by the voters. If you choose to take this to the voters, goes into general fund.
And so we would use that tax revenue to hire people to collect the tax revenue, correct?
Not necessarily.
What revenue would we use to collect the tax revenue? To hire somebody to audit, to collect tax revenue, what revenue would we use to use that?
Well, there's, there's cost recovery and then there's other aspects of this. Do you want to explain a little further?
I'll try. The resolution that interim city manager is referring includes cost recovery for auditing. And so the cost, the operators would pay a fee to cost for auditing. I don't know that the city would have to hire anyone to, any new employees to count the money that comes in and then spread the money through their accounts. Auditing is typically done by a separate contractor, separate consultant, so that cost would be paid by the operators.
Just what I'm getting at is like, it's almost like we're rubbing salt in the wound. If we put a tax measure forward, we're going to charge them to audit that in the permitting process that's going to continue to go on, it sounds like, and continue to audit, as opposed to using the revenue that would potentially come in through a tax measure.
Those aren't questions to me, those are questions to your fellow colleagues.
And I, and I talked to Mr. Wilkie earlier today and he says his staff is full, so there would have to be somebody else new. He said he couldn't do something new and unique and different. So, you know, I went back and had an opportunity to.
May.
Yes.
That conversation, I believe, was about the monitoring of the agencies for compliance of their application. I don't believe we talked about the collection of tax revenues that would come through the Treasury Department.
That's correct, but you told me you were, you were maxed out right now with that. So extrapolating if they couldn't do that other level of monitoring, then they couldn't do this level of monitoring. You tell me you wouldn't have to hire anybody new to do this level of monitoring?
We didn't have to hire anybody new to collect the T-bid payments and that's the same type of tax revenue.
Right. Anyhow, like I said, I had an opportunity to re-watch the consultant and just one of the, the big flaws in, in his calculations. And it's important to say that he, they are quite variable what the potential taxes were, but he did use in his calculation of potential revenues, the 3,000 people that are in the local prison, he's the 43,500 number as part of the calculation, which maybe they might want to get out and get some, but I think it showed the, how off a lot of the analysis is and, and, which was one of my reasons originally, was to, to look at this maybe down the road before we knew what we were doing. But there are, there are and were a bunch of flaws in the calculation that SCI put forward and that is one of the, probably the most egregious.
Councilor Osborne.
I'd like to remind not only council, but the public that this not is about, this discussion is not about whether or not we should tax. This discussion is about what that tax measure looks like and putting it forward to the public. This is new information since the consultant was here, that was off the back of an envelope to start the discussion and we can absolutely correct any consultant and where they might have errors in not understanding our community completely. But this is more about what does that tax measure look like and putting it forward to the public to vote. This is not a decision by us whether or not to tax. That is not what our decision should be. Our responsibility to the community is to address our shortfalls in our budget and this is one of many options that we have. And so I'd like to focus the discussion this evening being on what does that tax measure look like that we are putting forward for the public to vote on? And if the public chooses not to have a tax measure on cannabis, so be it. But that's not something we should be choosing. We should be putting together a measure. So I, I'd like to steer the conversation back to what does that tax measure look like and hear from the public and hear from our residents and know what they are concerned about us not covering. We had a public comment talking about our parks not being cared for and only having four employees to cover that. That is not something with a 1.2 million variance we can address when all we can do is cut. So we have to look at generating revenue in order to address our current shortfalls. This is not about increasing government, this is not about increasing staff. It is about addressing current shortfalls to our community and this is one of many avenues. And I would rather address all of them, but tonight the avenue is what does that tax measure look like on cannabis to put forward to our voters?
Councilor Vega.
As being part of the ad hoc committee with Councilwoman Osborne, I'd like to explain the mindset here. I think in the beginning, you know, for the push forward for cannabis, it was always expected there would be some sort of a tax measure. What we wanted to do was paint Lompoc as being business friendly. But as I explained to some of the constituents that have contacted me, we voted for zero tax and there's a mindset there that, hey, we're going to allow people to come in and, and grow their roots and allow them to be successful. As you see city government straining for resources and you see your, the cannabis business also, the influx coming in, many of the cannabis distributors and people that came in here were okay with a cannabis tax. I think what we're talking about here is the amount of tax to allow them to be successful. I think we're getting skewed to a different arena here, which says, hey, they wanted to be, they want to be respected. I believe all of you want to be respected as a legitimate business, want to give back to the community, want to be part of the solution instead of part of the negative aspects of here. So we're here to make it work for everyone. I think that to be a legitimate business, I think you're just worried about the success rate. Lompoc has been kind of off the beaten path for all businesses. You know, the demographics, and we've heard this for years and years, that we're off the 101. You have to come on the one, you have to come over here. There are easier access, it's cheaper for other people to do business outside of Lompoc. And that's for any business that actually has come in here through the years, has nothing to do with cannabis. So basically, we're trying to just come through with a meeting of the minds of, of seeing what would be fair to allow all of you or all the people that are involved with cannabis or any business to be successful instead of waiting down the line. There's comments that have been made that said, hey, you guys voted for zero tax. I agree. We did vote for zero tax. We have an influx of applications now. I think it's to address this sooner than waiting till everyone's established and they have a workforce that's already been hired to find out that the taxes are going to cut into your overhead. I think that would be unfair and that's the reason that I supported bringing it back sooner than later so that we can all address this jointly. And hopefully we can come to a meeting of the minds here where it helps everyone. I think the mindset here is that for enforcement, but I think as businesses come in and they're pillars of the community, it's going to be more for the safety or anybody else that would probably do you harm or steal from any business. And I think we're, we're looking at it a little different. I think the police are here to support whatever measure and policy the council puts forward. So for your business, and you guys are going to have quite an investment there, they're also going to be patrolling your areas to make sure no one actually infringes on your privacy. So I think we have to look at it just a little bit different. Instead of enforcement, I think we're being involved with the community and being immersed in the community and being looked at as a legitimate business with giving back to some of the local nonprofits or people in need, I think that would be a great benefit for Lompoc.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll open this up to the public.
Good evening, Mayor Langgo. Council members, my name is Rob Trailer and I'm a Lompoc resident. I've shared my thoughts on taxation before, so for consistency's sake, I'll say again, cannabis is a commodity and should be treated like any other commodity without the imposition of any additional tax. However, if you do intend to instruct the city staff to draft a ballot measure regarding an industry-specific tax, I encourage you to consider the following. Number one, be conservative. While it may be easy to conjure visions of dollar signs or empathize with constituents pleading for cannabis companies to pay for public safety budget shortfalls, don't lose sight of the fact that as a practical matter, businesses don't pay tax. They never have, they never will. Taxes are passed on to consumers who pay them at the register. So the more costly it is to do business in the city, the higher the city artificially inflates the price at the register, the more likely demand will turn away from the licensed business to the unregulated black market. And number two, implement it slowly. California is less than six months into this adventure and there are already examples of what appear to me as a rush to judgment. The city of Berkeley cut its tax rate in half after a mere six weeks. Grover Beach has directed its staff to develop an ordinance to cut and cap taxes. And at the state level, there are bills being considered to reduce the excise tax by nearly a third and suspend the cultivation tax for a number of years. These moves suggest there's prudence in allowing this industry to. a number of years. These moves suggest there's prudence in allowing this industry to mature in a regulated environment rather than leave it to flounder in its infancy. Number three, this is not a closed-loop system. There will be products manufactured in the city and distributed elsewhere. There will be flowers grown elsewhere but retailed here, deliveries made to surrounding areas by businesses headquartered in the city, but there may be also cannabis that never leaves the city from seed to sale. So while a percent here and a percent there may not seem like a lot at first glance, by the time the product works its way through the stream of commerce, the end result is a double-digit tax rate that consumers must bear, à la Measure T. And as a buddy of mine used to say, 10,000 pounds of lightweight gear is still 10,000 pounds. And finally, number four, encourage investment in the city. It's no secret our ordinance is among the most favorable in the state. Even early on, it has attracted businesses that otherwise would likely not have considered our modest town. I would suggest we need a tax policy that continues to keep Lompoc in the forefront of the minds of investors and entrepreneurs that promotes much-needed economic development within our city. There's more than one way to benefit from the development of a new industry: reduced commuter traffic, higher wages, increased property values, just to name a few. Not every problem needs a tax, and not every tax solves a problem. Thank you.
Okay. Before you start, do we have the timer set? Ah, okay, good, okay. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
You can go ahead, they've got it on, they'll let you know.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Joe Garcia. I'm the co-founder of the Lompoke Valley Cannabis Association, a trade organization which will on Monday announce that it is leaving its exploratory phase and moving forward to a nonprofit status to bring together businesses for a professional trade association here in Lompoke to focus on issues that cannabis businesses will have and bring forward to this council and other areas. I am concerned tonight with the motion that has come forward and we're speaking about concerning several taxes which almost amount to a Measure T 2.0. And I understand that when 57.6% of Lompoke voters passed Proposition 64, there was some sort of expectation from some of those voters that a tax would be collected. And I think that those voters have spoken their mind not only that they want to legalize cannabis and regulate it here in the city of Lompoke, which has been proven with the failure of the referendum. We have been given instruction from the public, I've heard that this ordinance, Ordinance Number 164017, which this council passed, was a gift to the industry, and I would have to say that I disagree with that. This was a gift to the people who voted for this, and the people came forward as a coalition to advocate, I chiefly among them, for this ordinance. I am concerned that today, if we allow all these taxes to come to this industry, that we will kill this industry, that we will kill jobs, and we will kill opportunity for Lompoke and its economy. If you take shoots of plants and you feed them fertilizer directly, you will kill them, and that's what taxes will do. So I'm asking today for an alternative that the Lompoke Valley Cannabis Association, as well as the Santa Barbara Cannabis Business Council can support. And I would ask that you consider a 5% retail tax on gross receipt sales for retail-only excluding medical. Medical patients are probably the most deserving of cannabis, and I don't think it would be fair to tax them. I think they have to jump through a lot of hoops to get their license now, including going through the state. I believe that a tax of 5% of retail gross sales, if we have a customer base of 10,000 people, could generate up to $500,000. If you include Santa Maria and other banned areas coming in here, we can double that and have an income of possibly $1 million or more with just a 5% retail tax on gross sales, retail-only excluding marijuana. Please consider that.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name is John Farr with Whole Oil LLC. We have recently put a large amount of energy and investment towards setting up manufacturing here in the city of Lompoke, Lompoke. One of the reasons that we did this was because of the low, the no-tax that was voted on last month and a affordable lease rate. We're being offered a $1.50 per square foot lease in Golita and Santa Barbara. I have several buildings there that I can lease there that are permissible, that are, have a 3% tax rate. We've looked, we've decided to locate here in Lompoke because of the no-tax rate. It's not convenient for us to be here, it's not convenient for us to transport product here, but with these incentives, it's worth us relocating. If you take these incentives away, we have to seriously reconsider whether we want to relocate here in the city of Lompoke. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmen, councilmembers. I'm Andy Brass, Dunn Chief Operating Officer and owner-operator of the largest cannabis-infused consumer products, beverage, and ebbless company in the state of Washington, and we're making a very serious effort to invest in your community. Just for the record, I'd like to offer to the clerk a copy of my email letter I sent to each of you, including the acting city manager, on Friday, and it didn't, appeared to make it to the record. Since we have limited time, first of all, I'd commend all the eloquent comments from others before me. There are 482 cities in California, you know it better than I do. About 147-ish have cannabis favorable legislation on their books, that's part of your competition. Some of them have very onerous tax structures, many have reasonable tax structures, 0%, 1%, 2%, carbon value for retail, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution. For manufacturing and distribution, just to put a picture of the face of our company, there's three owners, my wife and I and our business partner, bootstrapped. We're entrepreneurs, we're risk-takers. I'm not a traditional cannabis person. I see a tremendous benefit in legalizing this industry at a macro level for greater societal good across America. We'll set that aside. Two, it's a very stimulating industry to invest in and help shape. Three, it's extremely capital-intensive. We're not a grower, we're not a retailer, we're the manufacturer. We're like the Nestle's, the General Mills. We make a bunch of stuff that people like, deserve to buy, deserve to buy it in a legal, safe way. That makes us really happy. Capital investment to do that, just for our company to locate here with real estate, will exceed $6 million. That's buying a building, repurposing a rundown building, investing my money into it, will create by the end of this year, if approved, and you don't go the tax route, by the end of Q4 of this year, will create about 20 family wage jobs with benefits. Manufacturing value products from commodity raw material produced by various farmers, being extracted into oil, ingredients that we buy. So I urge you, for economic development, we are the face of economic development. All these entrepreneurs, we fit right into your 2030 economic business plan as a city. Job retention, best way to retain jobs in the community, have a healthy community. You do that by healthy businesses.
Thank you, sir, I need you to wrap it up then.
So, thanks for the time, appreciate it. I'd like to be a citizen of Lompoke. It reminds me of my hometown, Yakima, Washington, where I grew up for 25 years.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Todd Mitchell, resident of Grover Beach, but, you know, potential business owner here on Ocean Avenue. I do think that it was a fairly, a very wise, wise move of the city council to do a 0% tax to attract businesses, and as you've had an influx of applications for various businesses, I think that's, that's proof that that strategy has worked. At the same time, I do see that this city is financially struggling as many are, and as all those unfunded liabilities for public pensions and such come in, that that will worsen for the city. And so I just encourage you to think very thoughtfully. There, as other speakers have said, there are manufacturing and distribution that may or may not stay within this community, as well as, you know, I've applied for a retail store, and so those funds will relatively serve this and stay within this community. So I would encourage that you do something more like a 1% or 2% tax, not to exceed a cumulative 4% tax within, within the city, if you are going to go forward with the measure. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lingel and fellow councilmembers. My name is John Defreel, I'm a local Santa Barbara County farmer. My business partners and I have already invested several million dollars in properties here in the city of Lompoke, and we have our applications in for manufacturing and distribution. You know, we're here to be members of Lompoke. My wife and I are shopping for a house in the city of Lompoke right now. We just live right outside an unincorporated Lompoke. We're here to stay. That being said, when you guys passed the 0% tax, it was beneficial for our business because we were able to get a lot of contracts that allowed us to compete against manufacturers set up throughout the state. Since this is a statewide industry where there are 5% or 10% tax rates, even 3% allows us to be more competitive at a zero. That being said, if there is a tax rate put on manufacturing and distribution, it will just make it more difficult for us to continue to attract outside business for our manufacturing facilities. Currently have 65 employees. Right now, we're sending about 20 of them to the city of Hollister to operate a manufacturing facility. They all, about half of them are residents of the city of Lompoke, and they're all looking forward to us getting this manufacturing facility online here so they don't have to commute four hours to go to work every day. We're paying for them to be in hotels up there right now. They like to come back and live with their families again. All of these jobs are skilled, well-paid jobs. We run our facilities 24/7, 365. People are making $17 to $22 an hour as a, on average, some much higher than that. So these are skilled, well-paid jobs. We do support a tax at retail, as was said by many other speakers, you know, people are used to paying their taxes at the cash register. It's uncommon to tax wholesalers. You also have to consider that you're competing against cities like Santa Rosa or King City, or cities in the Los Angeles area that have 0% to 1% tax rates. King City has a flat $30,000 fee on manufacturing. We'd recommend looking at something like that if there were to be a tax rate versus a gross receipts tax rate. That's about all I have for you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Jared Ficker with California Strategies. I do have a presentation, so can I get that out? My time over when it goes.
Yeah, well, we'll start with you.
Again, Jared Ficker with California Strategies. I put a very detailed letter on file for you all. And what I'd like to do is walk you through a quick presentation. Just as context, we have a client that has acquired a lease for 60,000 square foot building in the, in the area. We're anticipating, they were very encouraged to move forward in this, and we're anticipating up to several hundred jobs with multiple licenses. We've been working on six applications, and in all candor, you know, two months ago, you passed a 0% tax, and we were directed to stop all work when you re-agendized this item. So we are trying to salvage this opportunity for our clients and have a reasonable discussion. And so rather than talk in hypotheticals, I'm going to make an effort to be quite specific about some recommendations about how you go for. So key factors really quick in terms of what people look at for locating commercial cannabis operations: proximity to major markets. Clearly, Lompoke is not optimal for that. Proximity to baskets of supply, it is optimal. Local tax rates, we'll see how that goes. Real estate costs are fairly comparable to other jurisdictions. Status of local ordinance, I think you guys did a great job, is optimal. And the efficiency of permitting, I think, has a great potential to be optimal. So we're really out of line mostly on this proximity to major markets. Tax rates in competitive jurisdictions, these were not put in the staff analysis, but these are really what my clients are benchmarking against. Santa Rosa City, distribution is 1%, manufacturing's at 0. King City, $30,000 just an annual fee, and that's really a $30,000 flat tax. This is not the reimbursable portion of this. And several small cities in LA were doing development agreements, and on average, we're really focused on this distribution, this middle part of the market distribution and manufacturing. It's really in the 0% to 1% and 0% to 2% or small annual fees. Our recommendation, and this gets to that specific, is really a hybrid of the gross receipts and annual fees concept. We do support what was previously mentioned for 5% retail. We would also support what's in the staff recommendation. For 1% nursery, we'd recommend 4% for cultivation. These are standard rates up and down the state. So, you know, as you know, the state taxes on retail and cultivation. So what we're most focused on are these sort of low-margin, high-capital-investment scaled areas of distribution and manufacturing. And rather than do a gross receipts tax, we're recommending akin to King City, which is a very comparable jurisdiction that has seen massive capital investment and, you know, upwards of 30 or 40 licenses since they've passed. They were a little ahead of you all. They did a $30,000 flat tax, we're proposing $15,000 to $30,000. And we would stratify those based on net income of those operations, so that a small licensee could come in and actually have a reasonable annualized tax base. And I'm going to bring this back up so you can see it at the end. We did some preliminary conservative revenue projections for this, based on the gross receipts and based on number of licensees which we would apply that annual fee. Under one scenario with a fairly modest amount of activity in this community, you could generate, essentially, here it shows about $800,000. I can go back to this if you have questions, but in the interest of time, I'm just going to move through these. This is scenario two, a very minor uptick in the number of activities, both on a revenue side for the gross receipts and that cultivation and retail space, and a few additional licensees, both small and large, 1.5 million. Finally, I just want to make a couple distinctions and some key findings on economic studies. These are significant living wage jobs, $17 to $22 an hour. Revenue generation typically outweighs the costing. Administer these programs, and finally, this notion of money generation, you know, it is very significant compared to federal spending. And then finally, I'll just conclude. Am I cut off?
Go ahead, conclude.
Let me just make a couple other points here. You know, in this ecosystem effect, in these communities where they had a low tax on the middle market, it actually resulted in huge attractive of licensees. So again, you know, we're looking for certainty. We're at a very sincere inflection point as to whether or not we locate here, and I just leave you with this proposed recommendation. We put a lot of time and effort into this. I think it's a good balance of revenue generation, but also providing you something to think about.
Thank you, sir.
Quick question.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yes, of course.
I know you're not going to be able to give me a good answer, but a good rounded answer. How many jobs, if we were to stay as we currently are, how many new jobs would this industry bring in this city?
You know, I can't speak for other prospective licensees, but I can tell you of about the six operators that we were planning on locating in that 60,000 square foot facility. I think we've projected that once we're in full ramp-up, we'd be close to about 200 employees. So these are not farmworker-type jobs, these are, you know, highly skilled, light manufacturing, lab tech type of jobs that we'd be putting there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next, please. Okay.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Ball, local citizen. Just as an outsider, I just wanted to point out a couple things. It sounds like, at least from the industry, there is flexibility and willingness to be open to some sort of taxation. I think a lot of the voters, it's been mentioned, they've expected, that's totally reasonable. I think in terms of competitiveness, big picture for Lompoke, it's, it's one thing to be competitive in an industry, but we also have to consider property values and law enforcement, public safety. The industry could be booming here, but if public safety goes down, people looking to move here, looking at real estate, they look at how good the, you know, percentages of public safety, all those things matter, and it adds up to people's choices. So I just hope that the city council considers putting this back in front of the voters. Ultimately, they get a chance to, to make their voices heard again on this specific issue. I think there's a happy medium. I think we can remain competitive in the industry and also help out Lompoke just a little bit in terms of enforcement and keeping our public safety where it needs to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Evening, council, mayor, citizens of Long Poak. My name is Richard Smith. I'm CEO of Cropland Health. We're planning on opening five, applying for five different licenses, retail, manufacturing, distribution, packaging plant. The change in tone with taxes is really concerning for me because I'm just a small business owner. I don't have millions of dollars. I was born and raised in this town and it's kind of a dream that I got this opportunity to open up and be in the pioneering phase of the cannabis industry when it's regulated. So I'm disappointed that we're now considering something similar to Measure T, which is, we had a significant advantage. I mean, if you look at how cannabis operations are going to be in our area, Santa Barbara County already has the majority of cultivation licenses in the state. So that's right there where the basket is. Like the former speaker said, there's not going to be a lot of cultivation in Long Poak. I mean, where are we going to do it? We don't have lots of 50,000, 60,000 square foot facilities that are ready to go. So the numbers coming from 4% cultivation tax or whatever you would decide, I mean, it's going to be skewed because there's not going to be a lot of cultivation here. It's going to be the middle part of the supply chain, manufacturing and distribution. We have a significant advantage of keeping those tax rates low because the cultivators in Santa Barbara County are not going to want to deal with the high tax rates of distributing and manufacturing in the county. And we're going to be right smack in the middle of Santa Barbara County with the opportunity to offer those services and stimulate our economy and keep that, you know, money in our economy here. And, you know, I have to reconsider my plans for Q4, which is to move towards our build-out for the distribution building and manufacturing if there's going to be a higher tax. I mean, I'm going to move forward with my dispensary. We already had, we have plans for that no matter what. And I could get behind a retail tax. I mean, like former speaker said, customers are used to paying that. But we're just basically going to kill the industry that's coming here with high tax rates hitting the middle part of the supply chain. It's just gonna, the investment's going to go away because there's lots of other opportunities. Before this conversation started again, we're number one in the state with our ordinance. It's the best ordinance in the state for cannabis operations. We have no limits on permitting. I mean, it's, nowhere else beats it. And with the tax, without having no taxes, that's just a huge, huge opportunity for us. And I think we're blowing it if we want to implement taxes and destroy the middle part of the supply chain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Mayor, council members, my name is Brian Adams. I'm a local entrepreneur here. What I want to speak to you guys about is the realities of it. And we've started a business and we've drawn people here. And Long Poak needs a draw. And it's, I like the city, I like to operate here, but people would prefer to operate in Galita. People would prefer to operate in Santa Barbara and other places around the state. And that's just a reality. And what we're talking about doing is regressing from a progressive measure that we had to applications that we had. And this rush that, you know, people were afraid that we'd locate 200 businesses here or have an overload, hasn't been the case. We have applications, we've drawn businesses here, and a big part of that was the ordinance and the tax rate that you guys set. As we move backwards away from that, you're going to see less applications and less businesses. And when we break it down to what's going to change your life, a half a million dollars of state revenue won't change your life. But a tenant coming in and renting one of Mr. Mosby's properties, that's going to help you as a citizen. Someone buying a house, Mr. Vega, is going to help you as a citizen. And we would talk about 200 jobs from one applicant or the possibility to have 200 or 300 jobs brought to Long Poak, that can change the community for the better. Half a million dollars for Long Poak and the city coffers, I don't think is going to change night and day of what our opportunity with this industry is. I'd like you guys to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilman Osborne.
So first, I'd like to clarify something. This is not a slap in the face of those of you who've put in an application. This is a commitment that I and the fellow council members here made to our community to protect it and serve it. And part of that is generating revenue when we have the opportunity so that we can provide the services at the expected level for all residents and businesses. So this is not a backlash. This is recognizing that you guys need consistency and that if we waited to consider taxes later, it would be until 2020 or 2022. And that's not fair to our community. And if you really want to be respected and trusted in this industry, then it's being part of the community. So I appreciate those in the industry who came forward. And I will say, you contacted us and I know for a fact you did. And I made every effort to listen and hear what you had to say and be respectful of the fact that you are committing to our community. At the same time, making an appeal to individual members of council and how they might specifically benefit personally from this coming is a violation of our commitment to the community. So be very careful about that as you approach this and speak to us either personally or from that speaker box because that is a form of bribery. And that is not something that this community should ever expect or think is proper. So please take that off the table. And if anyone on this dais is personally profiting from this, they need to recuse themselves from this discussion. So back to the idea, this is about setting up a respectful revenue source that allows you to function in the community and helps protect the community and build that trust that you're looking for to be normalized. I really appreciate the feedback on how you support taxes, where you support it, some of the new ideas, some of the research that I had done early on and had put aside. So what I'd like to see is us look at the proposal that is retail. So for me, doing a 6% retail that matches what the other areas are is fine. I don't think having lower retail is necessarily a motivator. If you're going to drive out to Long Poak because you live in Santa Maria or Bilton, you're going to drive out to Long Poak. But having a lower sales retail grocery receipts tax is not necessarily something I'm looking to motivate. So I would say we stay there. Testing, absolutely keep it at 0%. Hearing the feedback on the distribution and the manufacturing and knowing that these are well-paying jobs and that you're investing quite a bit, I still want to make sure you're contributing back to the community that is providing that public safety and the roads and the services to you. So I like the idea of the flat fee as part of that tax measure. So I really do like the idea of below 2 million at 15K and above 2 million at 30K for manufacturing and distribution. That is a solution that both tells us what's going to be coming into our budget as well as tells you what your annual fee is and something that you can budget as an industry that isn't overbearing. And I see lots of heads in the industry nodding. So I appreciate that feedback because this is what I'm looking for is how do we contribute to our community through what you're doing and at the same time not impact you or drive you away? And then finally, the 1% in the nursery and the cultivation, I can respect because that's not, you're right, that's not a lot that's going to be going on because of the agricultural base that we are surrounded by and that lots of the agriculture is being done outside and done in hoop houses and it's a better quality product and that growing indoors is very, very expensive. So for me personally, I would like to see it at a 6% retail, 0% testing. The manufacturing and distribution move to a flat fee that is that $2 million at, below $2 million at 15,000 and above $2 million at the 30,000 and then a 1% on the nursery and cultivation. So I think that is a healthy solution to moving forward a fair tax base that isn't going to drive away those of you that have put in an application. If you're serious about this and you've planned for this, that fee shouldn't turn you away. And if it does, you need to realize that, look at the communities you're going to go to and see if there is a better deal there and that's okay. I don't want to lose you, but again, I'm trying to walk that fine line of balancing it. So I really like all of that input. I really like some of these ideas that have come forward and I'm hoping that I can get consensus from council to put that form of tax measure forward and put everybody at ease and put it to the community to vote and tell us whether they agree with that or not.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a question before we move on, just to make sure I understand what the suggestion is? The retail was 6%. Is that phased in as originally?
No, not even worrying about phased in, yeah.
And the micro-business?
You know, I'd love to hear feedback. I'd like to see a cap on that because I don't want to drive away those that are interested in that. So I think keeping at a cap, I don't know if 6% still seems too high given the flat rate fee, but, you know, given the flat rate and the combination of the 1% on the cultivation, I'd need somebody better at math to give me what a good cap for that would be. So I don't want to solve all the problems if I don't have to.
Okay. I don't think she actually has made a motion yet. We're still on discussion, but that...
Yeah, I'm still discussing, yeah.
Okay, Councilwoman Mosby.
So Councilwoman Osborne, is that a 0 on distribution, 0 on manufacturing?
So instead of a percentage, it's the flat rate of the, below 2 million, a $15,000 flat rate.
What you're looking at is Mr. Ficker's papers, right? So you're looking at going, and it's 0 on testing?
0 on testing.
Okay.
And 1% on nursery and 1% on cultivation.
Right. And, you know, it's, you know, reading the report and such, and I think what you're looking at here is something that keeps in line with what are, one of our top council priorities, which is jobs. And I think we've heard that not taxing the jobs component and going on that consumption, you know, it's something that I could easily go along with. And I believe the, I didn't see anybody make a comment about the 15,000 or the 30,000 on the over 2 million or under 2 million, which gives them an easy understanding what skin they're putting in the game, which also helps in the collection component because we know what we're getting. And that, I think, would be a relatively easy way to go. And it stays in line with our number one objective, it's a council priority, which is J O B, jobs. So I think that what Mr. Ficker put together here, and as far as the micro-business, I'm not sure how many of the micro-businesses, applications we're going to have, but I think if you stayed along the lines of the, as written in here, the 4% cultivation and the 1% nursery, and as people comply in with that, you could have the maximum of, well, that would be the 1 in 4. It should be a 5% on that. They do have a retail side of it because you have to have three of the four objectives in the micro-business. And I'm not sure how many of those we have come forward, but...
For me, you could put a cap at 6. So if they have a retail, they're capped out at the retail instead of...
I'd go for 6% on the micro-business as well.
Okay.
So I think that would be relatively simple, simpler discussion. I think most everybody who came up here was very convincing that we did bring them in with the 0% and they would like to stay here with the 0%. They'd like to know that something is solid. We don't want to scare them away. I think it's good to hear that there are several hundred jobs just in this first few months potentially coming down the line with us. And I think it is one of the areas that will have the least amount of, what do you say, expenses towards amenities of the city. I think they're going to be very secure facilities. There's reading Prop 64, the track and trace, the seed to sale is going to be significant. I think there's already a lot of monitoring on them already. I did talk to one of the people who did an application recently turned in. The application itself cost $50,000 to put together and another $18,000 to file to the city. So it is not a simple, easy process. The binders were, you know, inch and a half thick. So it's a significant movement that we're moving here and I think that Mr. Ficker's statement, I think that would go align with, lines with a lot of what people said out there as well.
Councilwoman Vega.
Mr. Ficker, you had a proposal up here on the slideshow for the retail of 5% aside from the other material that we looked at. I'm not sure if you can give us a little bit more insight on the retail, where that number came from? If you wouldn't mind, I think we would all like to hear the difference between the 5 and the 6 and how the impact would be or whether it's negligible.
Yeah, through the mayor and Councilmember Vega, I don't know that I have much real input on that differential. I think we see retail rates throughout the state in the 5 to 10% range. I think the logic of 5% versus 6% was just simply to differentiate something lower than what the county is doing.
So...
We ourselves, I mean, my clients don't have an interest in retail.
Got you.
So I'm not sure I can really, you know, I probably want to hit somebody that has more at stake at that.
I'm not sure if anybody out here that's already spoken has any input on that, the retail side as far as the taxation. Obviously, it's 1%, but it's 1% that could make a difference to someone. If it doesn't make a difference, then it doesn't make a difference. So if it's just a lower number, anybody that's going to be doing retail, I'd just like to, I'd appreciate any input if it's, if anyone's out there. Yes, sir? If it's okay with the mayor?
On your question, Councilman, I'm not a retailer, but we sell to 350, 400 of the retailers in the state of Washington. And as the industry develops and matures, now we're in our fourth year of our experiment in Washington, retailers become more sophisticated, more experienced. Consumers also become more aware of what's in the market, what choices they have. And they're like all of us as retailers, they pay attention and they shop. So I think you would find after several years, the savvy consumers, particularly wanting a special product or special brand or type of product, the 1% might make a difference, just an observation since you were asking. And I hear that comment from retailers in the state of Washington. Taxes are the same up there, but as the manufacturers distribute goods to them, the price point becomes very important to the retailer because they're competing with the store down the street and down the corner, so...
I got you. So the 1% is probably not going to drive anybody to come to Long Poak.
No, but I think retailers that start competing with each other as the years go on, they would probably like to be in a jurisdiction with 5%, so 6%.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. I'd like to say this, you know, I think that Councilwoman Osborne, Councilwoman Mosby, I'm glad we're all kind of here to make business successful. We don't want to cut out jobs. We don't want to curtail your business. But again, I think out of respect, I think if there was going to be a change, which there should have been in the beginning, to be honest with you, the hook was for you guys to come in here and bring your businesses and bring your jobs. We don't want to cut that off. I think that's going to be a great, it's going to add to our coffers, it's going to be a good business development tool, and it's also going to say, hey, Long Poak's business-friendly to a point. You guys, just to be here in the real world, the support services that are going to be needed here are going to be advocates of you guys, okay? You guys are going to be legitimate business owners, you're going to have sizable investments. You guys don't want anybody to ruin it. It's better for you guys to be friends with the public service people than be on the other side of the fence, which I think that's the only thing, the difference between the mighty dollar here is it puts you on one side of the fence or the other. So I think that we, if we all jump on this side and say, hey, we want a clean community, we want the business to move forward successfully and we don't want to be taken advantage of, but we also want the hook to know that our investment is going to repay itself and the people will be happy with their jobs. Of course, just like many of you said, you're going to invest in the community whether you rent or you buy a house or you, you just move here because, hey, the job security, your families will be a little bit more secure and it'll make Long Poak a better place. Thank you.
Councilwoman Starbuck.
All right. I'm kind of inclined to agree with what the council majority is going on right now, but I'm going to say that I'm fairly embarrassed to sit up here with all the people that are bringing investment into the community and we're up here flip-flopping about it. I firmly believe the government should live within its means and it's hard to do that. And so to look at you guys square in the face and say, we're counting on you to bail us out, embarrasses me right now. I realize that the state is taxing you to the max already. One thing that we fail to realize here is that we will get compensation back from the state eventually. We will have public safety money sent to us for enforcement. We will have drug education money available to us from the state. These are all coming down the road on the tax that you pay to the state. The biggest concern I have about taxes is when you tax tea, you had a big party in Boston, you tax cannabis here, you have a big underground movement again. I really would like to put it into legitimacy vise the alleys. I firmly believe that jobs will create more income in this city than the taxes. It will happen, not instantly like a tax, but over a period, it will. What it seems like we're trying to do here is impose a sin tax. You guys have cannabis, you have to pay extra. Think of my popularity if I said, let's do it with Pino. Yeah, there's a sin tax that... Yeah, there's a sin tax that wouldn't fly very well. I'm about compromise. I would probably support going through and saying, okay, retail, I understand it. Maybe the 1% on cultivation, but the rest of it I want hands off.
See, Councilmember Osborne.
To our city attorney, we could put language in the ballot measure that allows council to go back and reduce any of these at our discretion. And that's something we could add to it so that if we, in the future, we saw that 6% was too high and surrounding communities had dropped, instead of taking it back to a vote, if the language was included in the measure, we could come back in council and make a decision to drop it to 4%.
That's true.
Okay. And then secondly, I'm not expecting this to solve our problems, Councilmember Starbuck. We have much larger problem than this will cure. There are other revenue sources we need to be addressing, but again, one at a time because I obviously have a council that doesn't want to talk taxes. So we'll tackle this one revenue source at a time. And I appreciate the cannabis industry tolerating what appears to be flip-flopping, but in actuality is new information. Because when we had the presentation again by our consultant, and then the following meeting had new information from staff about where we were going to be in a hole, it requires us to have this reconsideration. So I appreciate everyone tolerating the newness of this market, being willing to come forward and have this discussion. So if, Councilmember Vega will indulge me to make a motion?
Sure.
I would like to propose a motion for a tax measure that is 6% on gross receipts for retail, 0% on testing, 1% on cultivation and nursery, and for manufacturing and distribution, a flat tax rate of 15,000 for anything below 2 million net income and 30,000 for anything above 2 million net income with the appropriate language that allows council to reduce these in the future if the market deems it needed.
And the microbusiness?
Oh, 6% micro cap. 6%? Thank you for remembering that.
Okay. Is it my turn?
Hold on a sec. We need a second, then we can have discussion, so.
I'll have, I'll give her a second on that motion.
Second, and I believe Councilman Mosby is first up.
Yeah, maybe you could add in there that it's, I don't, maybe you wanted to tax the retail for medicinal or not, was that?
Oh, thank you for reminding me that. Yeah, that, I would like to exclude medical from the taxation. I'm fine with that, yeah.
So did you get a second on the?
I gave, okay, want to redo that? Do we have to add that? I'll give you a second on that one. I think one of my questions here, if I can ask, Mr. Mayor.
Well, do you, do you agree with the 0% on medical?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, now, go ahead.
But I, but I, I'm kind of fighting with myself over the, the microbusiness. I don't think we're so much informed that we put a 6%. And if that's just a cap, I guess we can go anywhere with it, but having lack of public speakers or information on that business, you know, maybe Councilwoman Osborne can explain where we're going to go with this as far as the tax measure is going to be a cap, but it doesn't say where the minimum would be.
It's based on a maximum, so no higher than 6%. So with the microlicense, because they're choosing at least three different license types based on the mix of whether they're going to be flat tax as a mix in that or they're at, you know, 6% on retail, it creates a, a limit so that they don't end up being overtaxed of having to pay the 6% on retail if they choose retail and a 1% on a nursery and 1% on cultivation and all of the different rates, it says as a total, they're, they're maxed out. So that it encourages microbusinesses.
Okay, you get a second again, how about that?
No, we, we have our motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is there any interest in, don't throw things at me, I'm just suggesting, is there any interest in having a CPI on the 30,000, the above 2 million?
I'm going to put no. I'm going to say no.
I don't want to complicate things tonight.
No, no.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay. Written communications. Okay, hold on. Written communications.
Nothing more than you've already received.
Okay. Oral communications, it's your opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes on any item that can come before this council. Okay, seeing many people rise, but no one come to the microphone, I guess we're going to close oral communication and come to council requests, comments and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
I just, I wanted to make comment, there was a couple of comments made about the budget tonight, and I just think it's important for the people to understand that over 70% of our budget is well, well in the black. Every one of our enterprise funds is well in the black. Some of them have reserve funds over $15 million. So I think it's very important to understand and make sure everybody understands where we're going from, as well as last year, or what we're looking at, it's finally up this fiscal year, we're going to have well over $1 million of new revenue coming into the general fund. The problem is we spent over $1.2 million approximately in raises last year. So it wasn't that we, we have a revenue generating problem because we are getting a lot of revenue in. We, we made up some time on some wages that we really need to do, both in police and fire. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that, that we did dig in deep on that and has put us in a situation. We also had a situation with $928,000 being spent, overspent in a department that dug into our reserves. So it's not that we're in necessarily a bad situation. We got a couple bumps we got to get through, and we made some movements that we desperately need to do in the past. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilman Osborne.
I attended the National Day of Prayer on behalf of the city. I attended the Economic Development Committee as part of the council rotation. I attended the UCSB Economic Forecast Summit on behalf of the city and mayor pro tem for the Santa Barbara County City Managers and Mayor's Quarterly Meeting. Two things going on in our community. Tomorrow is the Lompoc Police Department's food truck event from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, right out here in front of City Hall. So I look forward to seeing everybody out saying hello to our local food trucks as well as honoring our, our local police force. And then on Saturday is the Red, White and Blue Dinner, which is at the Vets Hall. Tickets are $50 apiece if you're interested in attending Saturday at 5:00, it's 735, call this number, 735-6751 to get your tickets. That money is raised to fulfill the fallen warrior memorial at Beatty Park's installation, so please support that. I do have a council request. Knowing that there is interest in cannabis businesses who want to contribute even more to the community, I'd like to put in a request that we potentially fast-track cannabis applicants who put in community benefit plans and local hire commitments as a way to accelerate those that are contributing to the community. So I would like to see that proposal worked up and brought back, that we could assist those that are looking to be even more involved in our community through that process.
Okay, and with that, she'll need a second and a third.
I'll give her a second.
Okay. And I'll give her a third. So they'll come back for discussion.
Just clarification, that was for the community benefit program, and what else?
Their applications include community benefit plan and local hiring commitments.
Okay. And I have nothing to report, other than I also attended the National Prayer Day. Okay, so with that, we are adjourned to a regular city council meeting, 6:30 PM on Tuesday, June 5th. Thank you and good evening.